I'm so happy today to have Steve Herring here. Steve, thanks for coming. You're the owner of Living Room Theaters, right?
Not actually the owner. I'm the CEO of the company, but thank you for having me. This has been a surprise and I'm happy to be here. But yeah, the owner of Living Room is a gentleman named Ernesto Ramos, who's actually from Mexico City.
Oh, that's cool. Yeah.
Little, little behind the scenes.
Kind of the international film scene there a little bit.
Exactly.
Yeah, thanks for coming. This will be a fun kind of thing. You got my attention because I watch a lot of city council meetings. You kind of did some testimony there that I really liked and I reached out to you and I'll get to that later. And I'll put a clip in later too for people to see, but I wanted to just start with getting your Northwest story. And how'd you get into the Living Room Theater business and all that stuff?
Yeah, you know, it's, um, I think it's interesting of like, you talk about like career paths or life paths. And there's a lot of Gen Z, Gen Alpha are kind of bucking the trend of this idea of like, oh, you do what your passion or, you know, but screw that, you know, focus on what's going to make you the most money. My career started out, or my engagement with working started out of literally just doing what I liked or trying to pursue what I liked. So I was a filmmaker for a good number of years and, you know, that started for me when I was a teenager. I did cable access at Mount Hood Community College, MCTV.
Yeah, yeah.
And as I kind of continued to evolve in that, I had a friend, now a friend, but a random acquaintance who said, hey, I'm working on this, this summer movie. Come help me. And, um,
Sounds like fun.
Yeah. So we, we started shooting that and that was back in 19, I think 1995 was when we began that. And I was starting to get involved more professionally on crews and other things in varying capacities. And from 95 to 97, I worked at a now out of business, like most of them, post-production facility called Northwest Video Works.
Okay.
That was over in Northwest, over off of Columbia, like 16th and Columbia. And kind of went through that when, when we were going out of business, um, you know, there's, there's, there's so much disruption in the various media landscape industries. And, you know, my entire, every job I've ever had, at one point I said to someone, I was like, you know, when I looked through it and like every place I've worked from like the mid nineties up through the early 2000s has gone out of business. You know, so, you know, sometimes I would say to people, don't hire me because for some reason you're going to go out of business. But it was like Northwest Video Works went away. Um, I had an opportunity to move to Atlanta. There was a, uh, series of news magazine shows that CNN was launching as part of their synergy with Time and their, when they acquired Tim Warner or vice versa. And so I got to go there for about six months. I was involved in the post-production of Entertainment Weekly and Fortune. And worked there for half the year where it was my contract that I'd had, could have stayed, but chose to come back to Portland. There was another, uh, gaming company that I worked for briefly, uh, before going to Atlanta, kind of in the in-between of when Northwest Video Works went out of business. And when the start of that unit was.
Like video gaming?
Exactly. It was an internet-based, um, it was kind of like a stock, uh, financial game that was a 3D environment. It was called Piggyland. And, um,
I'll try to put a screenshot over there or something.
I don't know if you can find it. It'd be interesting. Um, but that company, uh, was called Online Interactive Network Corporation. Oink.
And you mentioned earlier, was this kind of in the dot com boom?
Yeah, it was right, right in that run-up too. So that was like 1999.
Okay.
And kind of interesting thing, and the reason I go all the way back to here of just like, there's, there's branches that occur in, in your life. And there was, um, uh, kind of, I got involved and it was a tech oriented job. And I've got tech skills. I've always been very technically oriented, but I always wanted to go down the creative route, which is why I wanted to go to Atlanta and, you know, work for CNN. They offered me an opportunity to be more on the creative side. So then ended up leaving Atlanta, coming back, going back to Oink, uh, as they were getting ready to wrap up that game. And they actually, uh, got a contract or tentative contract with Mattel to do a really large property based on Barbie. And then right after they moved me back, that all fell apart.
In the dot com bubble?
It was, yeah, there was some, you know, I don't really know the details of like why at the time that it happened, but the kind of weird thing was the ownership of Oink, was this small company. So it wasn't just, it was called Visual Computing at the time and Wyatt Starnes and Gene Kim. And this small group of people who then went on to found a new company called Tripwire Security.
Okay.
Which was a intrusion detection software. And they offered me a job. And it was, you know, they offered me a lot of stock in a privately held company at the time that I was like, I got a job offer from Downstream, which was another post-production facility.
They're still around, I think.
They are, but in a different incarnation.
Changed a lot. Yeah.
And hence the gone out of business, uh, while I was there. So I ended up going, uh, over to Downstream and working there. Turned down the job with Tripwire. I love those guys. And, you know, it was an interesting thing that they were doing. But again, it was just very technical and I wanted to keep kind of pursuing film and video and the kind of more creative aspect of thing. Even though the job that I took was like network admin for Downstream. So I was back in the technical side of things, but went over there. Was there for about a year, almost exactly. And then, um, uh, the parent company of Downstream, which was Taiyi, uh, sold.
You're just constant in your life.
So then, you know, post-production, we, you know, we were pretty large, we were the largest post-production company in Portland at the time. They had a series of layoffs and I was in like the first or second round of those layoffs. So I left there, uh, kind of like dazed, ended up working for an online company, what was a, uh, pre-press company for like print called Exact Imaging. They were in Southeast Portland. And they got to a place of, uh, their industry, you know, the print side of the world was rapidly declining. And so, um, Wayne, the owner of Wayne Clark, the owner of Exact Imaging was like, oh, we're going to get into the internet side of things. And so I was one of the first people they hired. I didn't have much experience with like web development. And they basically said, oh, you've been recommended, you know, based on these things that you were doing, but I'm sure we, we can figure it out. And so they set me to begin like in January and went over there, started learning application development. That company lasted for about two and a half years and unfortunately also went out of business. And that was, that was a direct consequence of like the internet implosion of like the early 2000s. And then, um, so I kind of left there and I had this great idea, you know, which advice for any person who wants to be their own entrepreneur. If you're laid off, don't take the clients in the business of the company you just got laid off from to think that you're going to somehow make that go.
I think a lot of times it's contractually illegal or whatever, like.
When the companies evaporate, right?
That's true. Yeah. There's nothing to.
Yeah. So we had, um, we had a couple of pretty stable clients, like the Jugs Company, which makes, uh, baseball, softball pitching equipment and things like that. Anyone who plays baseball or softball would know. And then Helen Keller International, which at the time had just been just massively devastated. The Trade Center Towers, they were not in the two towers, but their primary office was like in a building across the street. And that, you know, most people don't know this, but that building also collapsed. And so they lost everything. And so their internet presence at the time was their sole lifeline to their hundred and something, uh, nonprofit offices around the world. And so we were integral to that. And so I took on those clients thinking I could make a go of it. I borrowed money from my parents and put some servers in, out at this, uh, you know, colo facility out in Hillsborough area. And it just wasn't enough. I mean, I was paying like $1,300 a month back in the early 2000s for just to host my server to keep their websites up. And I couldn't, you know, as an individual could not get enough clientele. So that went away. And then I stupidly thought, well, I'll just file for unemployment now. And it had been over a year since I had lost my job with Exact. And so because I was a payroll employee with Exact and then working for myself, I was, you know, not. So I wasn't paying into unemployment and the state said, oh, you, you don't qualify for unemployment insurance at all. So I couldn't get unemployment and that was like really awful.
You're just with nothing at that point.
Exactly. Uh, so that's where my advice of anyone in the future, if you get laid off, take the unemployment to like get on your feet as you're going. But then I, you know, I, throughout that entire time, I was still working on that Weekend Warrior movie with my friend Dave. From the mid nineties, you know, here we are, seven, eight years later.
It's just been polishing or something or?
It had gone through multiple iterations of like, we shot entire portions of the story and then scrapped it, you know, as we.
Visual storyboarding or something or?
Yeah.
Or like you just weren't happy with it.
Storyboarding by doing. Um, but it was interesting because my, uh, kind of trajectory is I was throughout all of that, still taking on projects. I went to California, I worked on shoots. I worked on, um, this movie in the summer of 2000, I think, that, I think it was 2000. There was this very, you know, half million dollar, low budget movie, uh, that the exciting part for me is we were working with, uh, Panavision Genesis cameras. And so it was the first Sony F950, I think, HD cam camera.
Is that the one? I always, I've mentioned this on podcasts. Is that the one they shot episode one Star Wars with?
It was. And we, the only reason we got it, uh, the, the movie we were working on was only like a two week, you know, six day week shoot. And it happened to be a break in between as they were doing like pickups for the completion of Phantom Menace at the time. So.
So you just got the availability in that little window.
That was it. And it was like, you know, I remember just being like, oh my God, this was amazing.
It's like the Holy Grail. Yeah.
Exactly. And we had access to, you know, Panavision lenses and we had Fisher Dolly and all of like, you know, really high-end, uh, tools. And so it was very exciting at the time to be like pushing the envelope of technology, um, with what we were shooting. So kind of the background of all of that is throughout the years, I had worked on lots of different things, you know, as much as possible. Whenever productions would come along, I would, I would engage and do that. And so as I got to the end of, you know, 2003, I was like, oh, I'm going to kind of keep doing that. And, and I worked on a friend of mine, I had, uh, struck up a really good friendship with filmmaker Rebecca Rodriguez, who, um, she had a couple of shorts that I edited for her in early 2000. And she's like the only filmmaker I've ever known that her short films actually made a profit. I mean, a tiny profit, but she managed to get those licensed to Hypnotic, which was a offshoot of Universal at the time. And they aired on like Showtime and like, you know, pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's difficult with shorts to, yeah, nobody do. It usually goes to a feature or something, but, but to make a profit is pretty incredible.
Yeah. I mean, just even to be able to get them on to something is just incredible. And so she was, you know, she's very talented and, and she had this, uh, screenplay for a feature extremely low budget. Like, you know, 60, I think we had $65,000. And we shot it on a DV camera, uh, DVX 100A or B back in the day.
The B was better, but you know.
Yeah. Um, and so we went into production, we shot that, I, the, I really specifically remember, I know it was like late March, going into April is when our production started. We had like a month of prep, but I remember it specifically because the Gulf War started like the day we started shooting. And, you know, you get into production and you're head down and like, you don't see the world until it's over. And I remember getting done and like the Gulf War was over and everyone's like, I'm so tired of tank footage and everything. I haven't seen any.
You missed it.
Yeah, missed it all. So we, we kind of got her film and she worked with, um, a bunch of good folks that people that I had known and that, um, worked with her to get the post-production completed on that. And then we had a premiere of her film in 2004. It was either three or four, I think it was four, um, down in LA. And that went pretty well, but again, like the movie finished and it was a, the story was basically, it was about two sisters who came from an abusive household and how that, uh, domestic violence sort of perpetuates itself through generations, you know, just from the, the ripple on from that. And it was her true story. So, you know, like most filmmakers, when you tell a story that's really close to home, it's like, you know, it's been percolating and it's tough. And, um, it had a very hard edge to it. So I always used to say, it's like a Lifetime movie, but much more real. And much more stark compared to that. And, um, we worked on a number of projects. We had tons of things that we were developing. We hooked up with a guy who no longer lives in Portland, Glenn Boyd, who was doing development. He was a, another former dot com guy. He was one of the co-founders of Web Trends. And he had sold that company. And so he hired us for a period of time. I worked with Rebecca and we went, I went to New York, we went to, uh, various like script pitch fests. And, um, you know, things were kind of, it felt like at the time, like things are happening, you know? We were taking meetings in LA with lots of different people. Um, Rebecca had a screenplay that she wrote that was based on the life of, uh, heavyweight boxing champion Thad Spencer.
Okay.
And that was called, uh, Chasing Greatness.
Like a biopic?
Yeah. But one of the most, you know, again, the thing that was always interesting about working with Rebecca, she had always a really unique vision for how to, you know, how to tell a story in a very gritty way. She was a female, female filmmaker, but she really liked, you know, kind of digging into like violent, uh, you know, kind of what would traditionally be the man's world of storytelling.
Tarantino or something.
Exactly. And so we tried for a while to get that going. And then, you know, Michael Mann made Ali with Will Smith. And unfortunately, because that didn't work, you know, as is with Hollywood of like, oh, if you're working on something, it doesn't work. Whatever you were working on is now dead for a period of time. So that kind of went away. And then we ran into another hurdle that Muhammad Ali actually was a main, he was not the main character, but it was without Ali in the story for Thad's story. It didn't make a lot of sense because that was his entire life. Um, you can kind of look back that when Ali got, you know, avoided the draft and then stripped of his title. That was what Spencer really wanted to pursue. It was, he wanted to beat Muhammad Ali. That was his life's ambition. And then when Ali was just not boxing anymore, um, he kind of spiraled and, you know, his life took a completely different turn. And there's a lot of other things to that. But going through those stories, we continued to like, um, Rebecca made some, another series of shorts. And I was always in, you know, interested again, sort of the tech side of me. I, uh, there was this company called Wafian Corporation, which most people may know of, it's now like, all these things got bought and put away. But they had this codec called Cineform, which ultimately got, went into GoPros, uh, if you recognize that codec.
It's like a light codec for that type of?
Yes. And it was really revolutionary. It was the first wavelet-based, um, kind of mass distributed codec for production. So, um, and kind of in the, you know, background of all this, I also had been freelancing for former Downstream staffers. Created their own post-production facility, which is still around to this day miraculously, Mission Control and Southwest Portland. And so I was really familiar with like HD Cam SR and like all of the formats that were the highest end of post-production. And the Cineform was this codec that was at a quality level that was comparable to those, uh, deck or tape-based, uh, systems. And that was sort of right as the beginning rise of digital filmmaking. Um, so we ended up shooting some shorts. I, I promised getting around to this story of like, we ended up shooting some shorts using this Wafian recorder as a test. So we worked with Richard Lyons, who's a cinematographer, who's kind of been out of the biz for a while, um, for the last many years now. But we shot on Canon XL1, I think that's what we, as a DSLR, uh, kind of alternative, but we used the SDI output on that camera and recorded on the Wafian.
It's got it on the back. That was one of my first cameras that I got. I took it out of my college fund, even though I didn't go to college, but.
They were really expensive.
Yeah, there was a, it was a holy grail camera again. Yeah, it was like.
But it was really incredible because it, it provided, you know, an amazing image that you could record out of such a low cost camera comparatively.
Yeah. And I guess for the layman, for people who don't know what the hell we're talking about, you're just kind of tapping the sensor straight from the camera. Yeah.
And, you know, going back to if we went, you know, uh, back in time, seven years for me, or whatever that was, six and a half years to working on the low budget movie that used those Genesis cameras. Interestingly, the XL1 paired with a Wafian actually had far better image fidelity than the cameras that Lucas used for Phantom Menace. Because they were, they were recording onto HD cam, which was a 411, uh, HD, highly compressed, 30 to one.
Just as a funny thing, I've, I may have told this on the show, but I always tell like filmmaker friends of mine, if you look, I've seen that camera on eBay now for like a hundred dollars, which just blows my mind because it was like, like the Holy Grail for these new Star Wars movies. And it was like the game, the game-changing HD camera.
Yeah.
And now it's just like, it's like a piece of garbage that you can, but it is, it's not that great of image fidelity when you really look at it.
Right. And especially as we've moved on to like, you know, Bayer sensors and all the other things that have come about since. But one of the things that, you know, the theme as we, as for me, from my point of view, as I talk about, how did I get into the mix of Living Room Theaters? And what has happened to the film industry, there's sort of echoes and pangs of the very thing that we're going through today. Throughout every company that, you know, that I've worked for, that's gone out of business in some way.
I can see that evolution for sure. Yeah.
So in late 2000, it was like summer of 2006, we shot, uh, two shorts simultaneously, you know, one, two, one, when you can do two. And we had, you know, it was Rebecca, you know, her ambition, I gotta give her credit for that of like, hey, we've got this Wafian from this company. And it was a pretty expensive piece of hardware that they shipped us as a, as a favor basically to, for us to try it. And so we had it and she's like, why not shoot two shorts?
I mean, you got the thing. Yeah.
So we did. So we shot these two shorts and, um, then we were kind of wrapping up post-production and I was, you know, uh, the owners of Mission Control. They were incredibly generous to me at the time of allowing me to use, uh, their facility in off time, you know, since I was.
Editing suite?
For editing and finishing. And so we got those kind of done and we were like, okay, we want to, we want to do something with them. And I had come up with this, been percolating this idea. We were working on a new or another film, uh, project that was an adaptation of a novel called Toast, which was written by this, uh, author from New Orleans. And, um, so Rex Rose was his name. And so we had the screenplay and we kind of came up with this idea. I went to a conference, um, 2006, 2007 called the Future in Film. And now actually it was before that we'd come up with, anyway, uh, we came up with this concept of crowdfunding to get the money.
And this is like pre-Kickstarter days.
Yes. So Kickstarter was actually, uh, there was another, uh, company, I think it was called Indiegogo. Something else was like launching the same fall is period of time that, uh, we came up with this idea. And one of the things that was like hard in the filmmaking days of the Jobs Act when Obama was president, they, they changed securities laws in a really significant way. So if you were trying to fund a movie as an indie, pre-2011, 2012, you had to create what's called a PPM, a private placement memorandum, which had all kinds of disclosures and you had to make sure that the people that you were getting involved, that they were considered sophisticated. So had the means to lose money and you could prove, you know, that engagement. And so, and movie making, for all that it is, you know, the majority, the overwhelming majority of movies that get funded, that movie is just, you know, light it on fire, you know? I hope you like the movie that came out of it because most, most investors in small indie projects are never going to see any money come back.
There's no ROI really. Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's nothing. So, um, so we were kind of like trying, we'd been, you know, we'd always get to a certain place with raising money. You'd get a certain amount of money, which would be like the trigger to like get the next round of money or something like that. Or you'd get talent together that was, you know, you'd try to do, you'd contact agents and managers and you'd get a pool of talent and they were limited window to like a go, no-go on, on schedules. And then you couldn't get the money. It was always just something of like pieces would always fall away. So we came up with this idea of what if we engage the audience and said, come along with us on this journey of how we make this movie. And for like, and our pitch was, we created a website, did, I did all the e-comm stuff. So this is like 2006 again, and took us into 2007. But we were going to launch this entire effort when we screened these short films and, and we were trying to find a screening venue. And so at the time, um, I really liked, uh, CineTopia had just opened their first location up in Vancouver off of Milk Lane. And I was like, hey, why don't we try going up there? And I met, uh, one of Rudyard Coltman's wives over the years. She was the events coordinator and we got a quote from her to like, screen our shorts. I think it was like $2,000 or something like that. And for a starving filmmaker, $2,000 is a lot of money. Um, and so we were like, okay. And then I was kind of like trying to figure out other options, maybe like the Hollywood theater, because we'd done stuff with them back in the day. And, you know, that was also kind of expensive. Um, and then a friend of mine suggested, why don't you look at the theater that's going in right down the street? And at the time I lived above Jake's in apartment building on 12th and Stark or Harvey Milk. And I was like, what are you talking about? And they're like, there's a theater going in at the old panorama space. And I was like, what? So, you know, it's hard to believe, living two blocks away that I wouldn't have known this. It was like a crazy thing, but you know, we'd been doing our own thing. So I walked down there and sure enough, there was a fence up and I saw this like vinyl banner that had this like funky logo that was like, Living Room Theater is coming soon. And so I managed to track down the people behind that and, um, met this man named Felix Martin, who was the guy who was kind of putting it all together. And they were like, yeah, we're going to open in just a couple of months. And I was like, we'd love to screen, you know, our shorts. And, and he's like, yeah, that would be great. And so we kind of tentatively planned to do that. And they, they were great because they weren't like, oh, it'll be thousands of dollars. They were looking at what could we bring to give them visibility. Exactly. And so we, obviously we were going to pay them something, but that wasn't where the starting of the conversation started. And so we ended up saying, okay, we're going to do it. And this was, we finished the shorts in late August and we were hoping to like launch our, you know, venture like in October or so. So we'd kind of tentatively said, we'll look for October. And then as the construction process just drug on, um, we went back to them and it was clear there was no way it was going to open in October.
Not that year.
Well, it was like, it was just taking a very long time. So, uh, we ultimately said, hey, you know, obviously not, but so what are we going to do? Cause we need to send out invites. We had about 550 people we wanted to invite and their capacity we knew was going to be about 300. And we kind of figured RSVP attrition, that would get us the perfect.
Even out.
Yeah. So ultimately we picked, I will never forget, December 13th was the date of our event. And we said, okay, we're sending out invites. So it's got to be this day. And they said, sure. So sent out all our invites. We got tons of RSVPs. Everything was exciting. They were still under construction. We ended up going on, um, the kind of press tour that they gave, hard hat tour for the press when they were getting ready to open. I remember Sean Levy, who was the film critic for the Oregonian, uh, was on that, uh, on that tour. I think, um, there was quite a few other, I think David Walker, who also used to be the film critic for the Lammet Week. And we kind of toured through and it was like, oh, this is going to be incredible. And our thing is only a few weeks away and I don't think they're going to be done. And so I had experienced, one of the things about Living Room when they first opened and, and I know that they made a claim to before, uh, I was in any way involved, that they were the first all-digital theater in North America.
Oh, wow.
And that wasn't entirely true.
Yeah.
But what was true about that was that the, they were the first all-digital independent theater. I'm pretty sure of that.
It was non-franchise or whatever. Yeah.
And certainly from the standpoint of from day one, there were, there was no projection mezzanine, there was no projector space. They, in the Portland location that we have in downtown, all of our projectors are in soffits. So like these little, you know, very uncomfortable spaces that are just at the back of the theater up high that they're accessed from the hallway. But that certainly had never been done at that point in time in 2006. The transition to digital cinema for all theaters was about in its nascent first push.
Yeah, real infancy.
Ironically, CineTopia, uh, was one of the first, uh, locations in North America that was part of that first access IT was the company that did, pushed out, um, cinema deals to get digital projection launched.
Okay.
And there was about 10,000 screens across the US in that first push, 9,000, something like that. And so there was very few all-digital locations at all.
I'm curious. Yeah, that's, what was the bigger pool, 10,000 out of?
Oh, it was 40, 47,000 screens. So it was.
So it's maybe a fifth of that or something.
Yeah. And if you remember going back to, uh, Phantom Menace, um, that was released digitally, experimentally, um, by Lucasfilm. I remember going to Seattle to see that movie and I think at the Cinerama at the time and.
Cause there weren't a lot of digital projectors.
Yeah. And they weren't very good. Yeah. I mean, they were.
Probably 1080 maybe or something.
Yes, exactly. Arguably they were not good at all. And weirdly Boeing of all companies, um, you know, the aerospace company was involved in projector manufacturing for experimentation back then. And they actually had the first experimental projector. So where I saw Phantom Menace, I remember seeing it, I was, because we got tickets late, I was like in the second row. And I remember very clearly like, ah, you can see pixels. I mean, it was like, it just wasn't, wasn't good.
Funny, because now I'm trying to remember, I was, I was like probably 13 or something and I was blown away, but I don't remember, I see, I saw it in California somewhere, but I was probably too young to even recognize the difference.
Yeah.
But I don't know. Yeah, that's an interesting.
Well, so the interesting part is, so Living Room, when they first launched, they had Panasonic, kind of a, uh, high-end industrial commercial projector that they used. They were a 720P projector. So all digital, but their main focus was to support independent and foreign film. And there weren't very many theaters anywhere in the country that that was their only reason for existing. And so there were so many things about what Living Room represented that I was like, this is cool.
Yeah, it kind of fits all the pieces of your life.
Yeah, exactly. So we did our, you know, we ended up, uh, we got to the launch day and, um, they still weren't done. I remember there's a picture of me sitting up in the soffit for Theater Five, wiring the audio cables.
Really?
Cause they just didn't.
You should send it to me. Maybe if you have it, I'll put it up.
I definitely have it. I can, I can find it and send it to you. Um, but.
Like on opening day.
It was, it was the day of our event. You know, I was, matter of fact, I had like changed clothes. So I was like in nicer clothes, uh, trying to finish everything.
Wiring audio for your own film or?
Yeah. And we did, we, it was super ambitious what we were doing. Like I look back on it, I'm like, what were we thinking? Cause we were simulcasting our movie into all six auditoriums. And I had to bring in pretty much, and again, thank George and Mike for Mission Control, allowed me to borrow stuff. But I had to bring in a lot of gear from Mission Control just to make the interconnects work, uh, to make that happen.
Duplicating that image.
Yeah. And we borrowed a HD cam deck, um, to be able to play that in, in the theater there. And, uh, so we got everyone in, we, you know, through just miracle, uh, it came off and like, we did pretty well. We launched our effort and of course it didn't work.
Something went awry.
It's really, it's hard when you're trying to get an audience to commit to something when you're no one, right? Like, you know, if you were to walk up to someone on the street and be like, hey, I'm doing this movie. And it's like, I don't know how much you've engaged with the public, but you know, no one wants to be bothered.
Right.
In, in any aspect of that. And we did not go out and like hit the sidewalk, but I think that was always my, uh, idea at the time. And Rebecca, it was just like, no. And Rebecca, it was just like, no, there's got to be a better use of our time than doing that. But what did happen is, is living rooms folks at the time were like, hey, you seem to know a lot about this. Do you want to work off your, you know, event rental fee instead of paying us as a starving filmmaker? Absolutely. So what ended up happening is like, I started working part-time for them and I continued to work part-time for, uh, mission control. And living in theaters when they launched, um, I don't want to say it was like egotistical or crazy. But they didn't know what they didn't know. And at the time in Portland, there were three competitive regal locations in downtown Portland. So there was the Fox Tower. Pioneer Place.
Broadway.
And the Broadway Theater plus Cinema Twenty One in Northwest. So there was four existing theaters. It was not an area where knowing what I know now, cause I didn't know any of this either at the time, you know, in years of being an exhibition. You learn that like, hey, you can only have so many, you know, locations in an area. And back in the day, back then, there was a common practice called clearances where, you know, regal would clear you. And basically strangle you to not be able to get any content. So. Couldn't play anything from, you know, given distributors when they would be, they would issue a clearance and the distributors.
Get all the licensing for.
Yeah.
Certain content.
And so, and then on top of that, because living room went with, uh, non-standard cinema projection. Which they were, which is the weird kind of aside of that of my involvement is they wanted to develop a playback system. For independent films and for independent distributors. And again, at the time, the cost to make a single DCP was about fifty to sixty thousand dollars. So to make, remember my little sixty thousand dollar indie movie, it would have been the whole budget just to make the playable cinema master for digital cinema. And so there seemed to be a large need for there to be an alternative for the independent distributors. And we're talking at the time, IFC, Sony Classics, Magnolia.
There's a lot stronger. Yeah, back then.
Yeah. So, um, they launched, they opened and, you know, they were hoping for like lines out the door. And it was like, not that. Um, and it was very, very difficult, uh, for them, you know, they, they overestimated their pricing structure. So I think that when they opened, I think tickets were fifteen dollars, which even to this day, we don't charge fifteen dollars.
But it, cause it's always been kind of a luxury experience. Is that kind of?
Yeah, that was, it was really, you know, Ernesto and, and his childhood friend Felix, which Felix ended up leaving. Not long into the launch of living room theaters, you know, they were friends and it didn't work out. So Ernesto, uh, his son Diego came to Portland and moved here to kind of take over. But one of the things that was like really key to both of them was to create a cinema environment that was catering to independent. Film and foreign films, because art houses traditionally weren't usually nice. You know, they were usually the rundown theaters that were run by occasionally nonprofits. You know, we're really lucky in Portland in a way. With like Hollywood theater existing and being so successful as an art house.
Right.
There's not many cities where you can say that.
I even remember back in that time, because I used to go to Cinema Twenty One and Hollywood and they were even kind of rundown at the, like now they've been super renovated. But there was a time when it is like, like you're saying, it was a little more raggedy. I don't know. It was just more rundown and.
Yeah. And it was, it was a very difficult time.
For those kind of movies, I should say.
Yeah. And, you know, and Hollywood has done a tremendous job at building a repertory audience and, and everything. And one of the things that Ernesto wanted to focus on was bringing the space so that size of the auditoriums down. Lower seat counts so that if you were seeing a movie with only 12 people in the auditorium, it didn't feel like you were in this huge cavernous space and there was no one there. That movie going experience that's so important to have people with you to commune with other people to enjoy the movie. And so, you know, our largest auditorium when we opened was sixty two seats. It's now sixty one in that theater. Cause we put in different seating in the front row. Um, but our smallest was thirty nine, which is now thirty eight. So it was between thirty eight and sixty two seats. That was the, the premise of living room theaters and, um. Kind of as I got more and more involved with them, I kept trying to convince them, hey, get a DCI projector, which would be what would play commercial studio movies. And, you know, they had to go through multiple changes to sort of the model of how living room theaters worked. As I was sort of peripherally involved, um, with that. And, you know, there was a lot of technological hurdles. So they, you know, the first thing they were using was called, uh, Proexhibitor. It was the software that was created from Microsoft, uh, through a marketing budget. It was not real. Um, so when they were first playing movies and what that basically was.
Doesn't sound fun.
It was software that would allow them to build a playlist and play out the movie on the secondary display.
Okay. Kind of like DLC or something. Yeah.
Yeah. But back in two thousand six.
Yeah, way before.
You know, that, those kinds of things were very difficult. And, yeah, yeah. And ultimately living room created another company called Proludio, which I'm also in charge of, uh, where we do. So we built a digital playback system and it took a number of years to sort of get that to where it needed to be. And we leased that system to theaters across the country. So there's close to forty theaters in various states that use a Proludio system. That we digitally deliver movies every week to, um, that's a whole other topic. But the round of this long-winded story of all of this is that the, as living rooms sort of evolved and we moved into embracing. Commercial films as well as indie films, we sort of found our footing. And, um, it was kind of a off random chance, but we ended up opening a location in South Florida on the Florida Atlantic University campus. Diego moved down to Florida and in about twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I was asked to take over the company and so I've been running everything here ever since. And as we've evolved through, you know, audiences have changed, tastes have changed.
Streaming.
Streaming and all the rest of that. Ironically, I, I'll also send you a picture because it's pretty funny. That there was a conference I went to called the future in film that was in Berkeley. That was where I was like, wait, that was the next year. There was a, one of the speakers at that conference, little known guy named Ted Sarandos.
I was, I thought you were going to say Reed Hastings, but same, you know.
Same thing. I mean, what was really fascinating about it is like, he was kind of like my lunch buddy. Like it was a, it was a industry conference. So there was no one. I don't think there's anybody from the public. There might've been a couple of Berkeley students, but it was like John Knoll from ILM and like all that. Like John Gata, who is the visual effects supervisor on the matrix. There was like just a great group of people talking about a varied. Uh, mixture of, of topics, all related to digital and filmmaking.
Future of.
Yeah. And they were working on at the time, Sarandos was working, you know, the, oh, they were working on a streaming version of Netflix. It wasn't real at the time.
Cause this was back when they mail you discs and all that.
And if you remember back to the early days of the internet, there used to be hugely, you know, it was a brand as synonymous as Netflix is today. Real audio, real video. Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Real player and all that. Yeah. They were, I remember, cause I was big into the, like, one of the first things I ever made was like a fake Napster commercial in high school. But they were in that music streaming world back then, but they were around forever.
They were huge. And they were basically the only game in town for streaming and Netflix was trying to figure out how to make their stream stuff work.
Now that you say that, I remember they were one of the first, only companies I remember that did streaming of any like video.
And it was terrible.
Yeah, it was bad. Yeah. It was like, you could either download a quick time or like real crappy streaming with them.
Yeah. So kind of, you know, just going through all those evolutions of like, uh, streaming really came to the fore. And about two thousand eleven is where, you know, when House of Cards launched on Netflix, I remember that being a pretty big thing. And then, you know, what has since happened is, uh, you know, consumer tastes changing to an extent. And I'm one of the few people that all along I have argued that, um, streaming and theatrical is not competitive.
Yeah, they are. I would agree. Yeah, they're kind of different lanes, you know?
Yes, but they're just through commercial interests now clearly have become competitive. And I mean, more than competitive, you know, al- almost at complete loggerheads. And not because of really the interests of consumers, but because of the interests of the studios and the content creators. Wanting to Hoover up, you know, the money.
All they can get. Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's one of the things, I always think it's fascinating, even within the industry, I'll read, you know, an editorial page from someone and I'm like, you work in the, you work for a studio. How do you not know how like film licensing works, you know, for, for exhibition? But like the run and straight of it is theaters rent, um, or pay film rental on box office for whatever movies they play. And those.
Kind of just licensing for a period of times that would come.
Yes, but what has happened theatrically is that the, the market has changed pretty dramatically in that. It used to be that you would license something for a week and if it worked, you'd keep it, you know, and on you'd go. And they used to have different licensing terms like that you could choose from a menu of options of how you would pay for that. And, and the major studios, as they further consolidated, when Disney acquired Fox, you know, that really changed a lot. And Fox was the first major studio of all the majors before Disney bought them to no longer recognize clearances. So the thing I was talking about that would prevent small theaters from being able to compete, um, they stopped doing that. And it was largely all because of the evolution of digital cinema. So it didn't cost $2,000 to ship a thirty five millimeter print. You know, to make and ship a thirty five millimeter print to each theater. And you know, weirdly, you know, we used to have film, uh, depots around the United States where the prints, when they were done at a theater, they would go back to. For either disposal, you know, being destroyed or archival shipment back. You know, there was thousands of theatrical thirty five millimeter prints that would create for every movie release.
Just still film, uh, collections. Yeah.
Yeah, in the cans. Yeah. And so those don't get made except for a very limited basis, you know, special seventy millimeter. And occasionally a thirty five millimeter run of, of some things, but like it got so, it like the industry changed so quickly. That, you know, Kodak, huge company, you know, century.
Barely around.
Yeah. Century old film company nearly went out of business. And the only reason they didn't is because the studios realizing that they were still using film. As an acquisition format, uh, if Kodak went out of business, the way to make movies would be gone. So they kicked in like a hundred plus million dollars to keep that film business alive. But so the evolution of all these things and we find ourselves arriving to today of, you know, movie theaters and the movie going public and content. Consumption by the public is completely different from what it was fifteen years ago.
Really is. It is, I was, it's funny you're saying that because I agree with you that I still, I still see them as different. And I was thinking of like, like I've seen the Peter Jackson Lord of the Ring trilogy so many times, but I went and saw it maybe a year or two ago. The extended edition, just, just for the theater experience, you know, and it's just so weird how maybe that's me, because I'm like a film guy. But like, there's certain ones, even if I've seen it twenty times, I have to go to the theater. As opposed to, you know, even if I've seen it on my TV, like dozen times, it's just weird. Like I still see them as different experiences, you know?
Don't you find it hard? I mean, I always say this to people. I, I, there's been many things that run through my head of like, you know, whether theaters are going to survive. It is a, it is a big question.
Yeah. Well, one of the things I was going to ask you, you kind of covered it, but during twenty twenty, you know, I don't know if you know, like the whole AMC stock thing. Like there was a time before that when I was like, this could be it for the theater industry. And I think a lot of people were thinking, but that's why the stock kind of rebounded. And now, yeah, if I've, to me, it seems like now it's kind of found its, its way. It's kind of like, found its way to survive, maybe. I don't know.
So there's an irony from my point of view in that it would have been better if AMC had gone out of business. Not, not as a selfish reason for living room theaters, but, um, for the US as a whole, that's the circuits. The circuits and the chains, I think are really holding back the industry.
Yeah.
And why I say that is like, they're, you know, they have, let's say that, let's just take the smallest of them. So Cinemark is the smallest of the three circuits currently between Regal, AMC and, and them. If Cinemark has a hundred and fifty locations out of their portfolio that are underperforming. They kind of, there's a, you know, a CEO who's looking at it, and I'm not saying this about cinema. I'm just using it as a hypothetical. A hundred and fifty locations that are, you know, underperforming, they don't necessarily, each of those locations don't matter to them as a corporation. In the way that if it was living room theaters and our one of two locations isn't performing. We are laser focused on what can we do? What, what are we missing or what, what, what can we do to do more for the public? And for our guests and corporations just don't have that focus. It's like, you know, they're a bit like, uh, oh, you know, cut off that pinky. Cause we don't need that anymore. And the, the totality of fighting against the studios. Because it is, you know, we have, I always like to say to people like exhibition and, you know, the major motion picture studios. That it's kind of a, you know, it's a relationship, much like an abusive relationship where, you know, we're the, we're the subservient abusee. And the studios are the abusers in a lot of ways, because they, they hold all, all the cards. It's very difficult to be able to negotiate or to even, you know, be reasonable at times, um, with movies. I mean, I, I would give you many examples of like crazy things that happen in exhibition of, of various films. Like I won't say what the movie was or what it was, but we had here in Portland, a movie come up, um, a few months back. Where we didn't want to play it because we didn't feel movie was appropriate for our particular location in downtown. The studio came to us and said, what the hell? You know, you haven't played our last X movies. Are you not going to play our movies anymore? And we were like, yes, but you gotta have a movie that is appropriate for our audience in order for that to work. And they really wanted us to open this movie. And so we ultimately agreed, you know, to, to bend to, to keep that relationship alive. And to, we want to try to help them out when we can. And it of course tanked, did not open well. And so now in the new environment of where we are, the studios require what are known as minimum holds. So that means that if you agree to play a movie, it's, it's traditionally two weeks. That minimum, minimum hold. And so what that means like in this particular, like this movie gross literally like $300 in like the entire weekend. And for us, that's, you know, it's, it is, it's like lopping off an arm.
Yeah. And you're just eating costs that whole time.
Yes. I mean, we're, we're essentially paying people to come see that movie.
Right, right.
And so we were required to hold it for a second week.
Right. And that's just painful.
And it was like, you know, that second week was a hundred dollars, you know, it was just brutal. And, you know, we, we're not in an environment where profit margins similar, you know, I always say to people like, I know that there's a lot of hate in the world for Walmart. Over, you know, them being a big evil corporation and they are. But their profit margins are very small, you know, under four percent average of net profitability. And it's the same thing exhibition, pre-COVID, the major circuits were averaging about three point five percent net profitability. On their total revenue, which is just a sliver.
Smallest margins ever. Yeah.
Yeah. And so the way that they continued to grow was through acquisitions, you know, and that's, in, in general, I'm going to just like my whole life. All of the industries that I've seen go out of business and everything else.
M and A's.
Yes. Yeah. Um, that, that mergers and getting bigger is antithetical to good society. And, you know, and competition and all the things that we want in a true capitalistic society. If you believe that there's a good version of capitalism, it means that some businesses do have to die. And it's an uncomfortable thing sometimes, you know, for what that means.
Yeah, totally.
But we need to stop having industries that get too big to fail. And so that's sort of where I say like, if a circuit had failed and we'd lost those screens, they wouldn't have gone away forever. Because there was valuable theater locations. Someone would have acquired them and they would have been operating in some different way. But it's sort of like that recycling process that's real in nature. For some reason in capitalism, in the last twenty years, we've forgotten that process that like, something has to die in order to feed the next group.
It's so funny you bring that up because I was just thinking about this yesterday, the day before, because I worked in the news industry for a long time. And this is probably a hot take, but there's a bill going through the Oregon legislature right now, which would basically, I think Australia has done it. But they, they'll force social media companies to, I would say bail out news companies in Oregon. And, and that's what I was thinking about from my perspective as somebody who spent like ten years in news. It's like, you gotta let these, these things just die on the body. Like just let them, like you said, go through the capitalistic process. Cause if they're not meeting their own needs in that business model. There's no need to keep it afloat and in my opinion, but I mean, that's exactly what, what you just reminded me of is like, you know, AMC or whoever. They're kind of propping themselves up in a way and maybe just let it play out.
The hard part is, is like, so let's just quickly, I know we've been going over time, but just quickly, just jump to the idea of, of a motion picture studio. And I'm going to pick on NBC Comcast Universal.
They're huge. Yeah.
They're a huge company. And, you know, there's, there's rumors within the industry that, you know, there, sometime in the next eighteen months. They're going to acquire whatever is left of Warner Brothers.
Oh, my God.
And it'll be terrible for everyone.
Yeah, that would be super conglomerate. Yeah.
Yes, but the incentive, so I was just at CinemaCon in Vegas in April. And I'm going to butcher his name because I don't know him, because the, the president of Universal International was on a panel there. And they were talking about, it was so, uh, about the state of the industry. And, you know, Universal has been very aggressive in moving what in exhibition industry, we call windows, you know, shortening the window of time. That a movie is exclusively theatrically available. And he brought up specifically a movie Conclave, which, you know, we just brought back. And also Wicked, which they did, uh, kind of a perverse little thing with on the release of that, in my opinion. But they are incentivized to get it out of theaters, right? They want that huge hit in terms of that revenue and the word of mouth and the buzz and all that. And they want as rapidly as possible to move it over to like on-demand onto Comcast.
Like the next day after.
Which of course they own Comcast.
Right, right.
So instead of sharing revenue with exhibition, you know, instead of getting, you know, let's call it sixty percent of the ticket for every ticket sold. They're keeping eighty to eighty-five cents of every dollar spent on on-demand. So of course they want to get it out of theaters and onto their own platform as fast as possible. But it's sort of the, we continue to contract as an industry. And if you look at across so many other industries. You know, when you start to contract, it is very difficult to stop that contraction. And as a, like, let's say you knew nothing about movie theaters or anything, you're just an average consumer. If you look at the exposure to movie in movies and pop culture over the last 20 years. 20 years ago, if you went to the grocery store, standing in line to pay for your groceries, the end cap that was there would be like the discount DVDs. And most, you know, every Fred Meyer and, you know, other places had an entire section of Blu-rays and DVDs that you, at the time, only DVDs because Blu-rays barely existed.
Sadly, I'm still kind of a boomer and I have like 300 DVDs. They're still working.
As I say, a lot of those may not even work today.
A lot of them are, what do you call it? Disc rot?
But when you look at what has happened is, so as we get rid of the home video market, you know, everyone chased after Netflix and it was just the insanity of what capitalism created, which is Wall Street was rewarding a company that was disrupting, right? Or that that was the outside talking point. But Netflix, absent the pandemic, I would argue would not exist today.
It's a good point. I mean, I always say, you know, a lot of people say they hit the timing so perfectly with Tiger King and all that stuff, but, but yeah, I mean, it forced eyeballs on screens.
Well, it wasn't just the forcing of eyeballs. It was the fact that like Netflix model, they were essentially borrowing tremendous sums of money. You know, they're in the 2020, early 2020, their, their debt was labeled junk. Netflix. And it was because they were capitalizing all of their content spend and they were overspending tremendously overspending.
On making their own or
both acquisitions and making their own. They were, they were, you know, if you go to like the film festivals and you look at the deals that were taking place in 198 or 2018 through 2022. For the festivals that survived outside of COVID, the amount they were spending to acquire films out of festivals was like triple what the traditional studio environment was paying.
Cause they just really wanted that content to.
Right. Yeah. They, they, they basically had free money. Wall Street had given them, had rewarded them with being the darling of the moment. And in the same way of the, you know, GameStop and AMC.
They're in the spotlight.
The regular, you know, everyday people that were trading in those stocks, it rewards those companies in ways that gives them additional freedom. That, you know, to spend money and to reward their executives and the executives behave in a way that is completely counter to the long-term viability of the companies that they're running. It's entirely motivated based on what can I get this quarter in my, you know, options and rewards? How can I improve the bottom line short term in order to reward myself? And if we diverge one quick second to a company that I think hit Portland in a big way that no one really talks about today. Meyer and Frank got acquired by Macy's. The downtown Macy's location, you know, was, we're not going to say it was like hugely successful, but it was pretty good. And Macy's executives at the time, when they acquired Meyer and Frank, they owned Meyer and Frank owned all their property, which was not the Macy's way. And so whoever was running Macy's at the time was like, oh, look at what we, we can give our, you know, our bottom line, a huge injection of profitability by offloading this real estate. Unfortunately, then it created a circumstance where the new owners, after they sold the building out from under themselves, the new owners, the leasing rate they agreed to in order to sell that building, made it to where the store became completely unprofitable and they're now gone. And it's, it's the whole point of like, where I say like, the larger companies get and the motivations for just pure money. It drives everything into an inevitable, terrible conclusion.
Yeah. No, yeah, that's all really interesting stuff. Yeah, I remember that period too. It just seems like the whole story of any subscription based company now, or even just tech company where they're basically debt ridden until they get hundreds of millions of subscribers. And then they're like, now we're just raking in the money like crazy. And all they have to do is raise their price by a dollar, $2 every year. Seems like that's what Netflix does. I don't, I actually haven't. It's one of the ones I don't subscribe to anymore. I don't know.
It's funny because if
A couple of years ago, I stopped paying for it.
The majority of their content is so forgettable.
Like the ones that they actually produce.
Everything they make is
There's a lot of that for sure. They throw money at a lot of stuff and
They have certain prestige projects and you know, they worked very hard to build relationships with, you know, very high-end talent and trying to get that, you know, to encourage that level of participation, but you know, they're losing some of those relationships because of their lack of embracing of theatrical releases. Nobody, nobody wants to spend, you know, as a filmmaker. You're not talking about, it doesn't just take three months or six months. It's years of your life to make a major motion picture or even an independent film. You know, you don't want to do that when you're like, oh, it's just going to Netflix, you know?
Do you know this? Do you remember? Cause did they do that with the Irishman? Have they done? And, and the, and the theatrical one didn't do that great, right?
So again, this is one of those things of remember my lunch buddy Ted Sarandos, I tracked him down when he and Reed Hastings were the keynote speakers at the Consumer Electronics Show back in, I don't know, 2017 or whatever it was. Where they were launching the international version of Netflix. And Ted had been just publicly constantly saying, oh, we love theatrical. But we really believe the audience should have a choice. And that's what, that was the public statement, but their behavior was they were choking theatrical. And not providing choice. They didn't want consumers to actually have a choice. They wanted the choice to be sit at home and watch Netflix. And they had opportunities with a lot of films that they've had. I mean, like the, the most famous one is Glass Onion, you know, Knives Out sequel. Where they, they created a theatrical run. It did incredible business. And they pulled it prematurely out of theaters so that they could put it on their service as they had committed to. And it's kind of idiotic. I mean, if I was a Netflix shareholder.
Keep that money coming in.
Yeah. I mean, especially because you're not going to lose Netflix subscribers, which has always been the argument of like, oh, they're going to feel cheated. They're paying for the content, yet they're not getting it first. It's, it's stupid. Like the people who don't go to theaters aren't suddenly going to go to theaters simply because of one particular movie isn't on a streaming service. They're just gonna wait as they always do because they're, they're price conscious in that way, or they just aren't going out to theaters. And so this is where, you know, I disagree with the majority of people within our industry of like how that plays out. But it is tough that when you have streaming services whose sole purpose is again, to grow. Cause they're publicly traded company. Where's the room for growth at this point? You know?
That's true.
Increasing subscriber numbers.
How many they have over a billion or something? I have no
I mean, in the US, hundred and something million subscribers. How many more can you possibly get? How many households are there?
Yeah, there's, there is a limit. Yeah, that's fascinating. I talk about this stuff all day. I, I do want to get into the city council thing. I'm going to play a clip of when you testified. I don't usually do this with clips, but I'll just play it and we'll just come back in a second here.
Good evening. My name is Steve Herring. I am the CEO of Living Room Theaters here in downtown Portland. I am a lifelong Portland resident, which is seems to be hard to find these days. The last time that I was in this room was your inaugural city council session. And I came here with a bit of optimism with this new form of government that perhaps we could get something done with not having the bureau system that we used to have. And I have to tell you, my optimism has evaporated. I see a city council, like the people testifying here today, very divided on the direction of council and the direction for the city. There's a lot of people who are here, I see at the, the committee hearings that come obviously at the invitation of various council members to provide testimony for public hearings that are only advertised or posted the day before. So the testimony that's presented is very one-sided. I'm going to call out councillor Dunphy. He was here and wasted 33 minutes of the Public Safety Committee's time introducing a noise ordinance measure, which then got passed on to the full city council. I'm sure you'll see it. I say all this because here we are with the budget. You all need to determine what makes the most sense to get the city forward at a time when we are declining. The city of Portland is losing residents. We're barely staying in business in downtown. Many businesses aren't even open past eight o'clock anymore. I thank the mayor for including the Portland police budget as it is. I looked up the budgets of cities across the West Coast, San Diego, Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Francisco, Seattle, Portland. We have the lowest police budget of any of those major cities on the West Coast. We also have one of the highest city budgets of any of those cities on the West Coast. We're third on per capita spending in this city. And you have to ask the question, where is the money going? You know, a lot of the things the mayor has prioritized, I'm very proud that you made it into office. And the detail that you show in what you're doing shows that you understand the issues. The question is, can all of you work together to get to a place that solves some of our problems? Thank you.
Yeah, I watched like pretty much all city council meetings. At least at this point in my life, maybe later I, I won't, but, um, but yeah, I just, I thought your testimony is really interesting. Um, and I'm just curious, yeah, your take, being involved with the downtown business here in Portland. Your take on that. And also I, I just thought your thing with Jamie Dunphy was really interesting. I've had a couple of city councillors on the show and, and I've met Jamie. I did my rankings and he was kind of near the bottom, but but I just thought like, cause I know the whole noise ordinance thing he went after and he got like props for it in city council. I always thought it was strange, just a strange thing to, to go after, but I thought it was interesting that you highlighted that.
So the reason I did it is because I thought, I watched the Public Safety Committee where he, so he was not on the Public Safety Committee, right? He came and, and the thing that has frustrated me immensely about the new form of government that we have is that the committees, which are supposed to enable more engagement with the public and more discussion around topics. That allows more public involvement. They've materialized in a way where they're the exact opposite. And what I mean by that is like in the case of the noise ordinance. They, that, the, the subject was introduced literally like hours before, you know, barely the day before. And the, the city council members that were on the committee, you know, that can all and, and all of them knew this was coming because Dunphy was the one who presented this.
Testimony area.
And he brought some guy, I can't remember what, he was like some technical guy from LiveWire Radio or something was the, the person who came with him. And the thing that is so egregious about the way this has happened is that they put it on the agenda, they stacked the deck with who was going to present to council themselves. And then they brought witnesses, the guy from LiveWire Radio, to then present to the five members of the committee information as if they're experts. And not only are they not experts, a lot of things they were discussing were legal technicalities, right? So that you had three members of the city council in that Public Safety Committee hearing that were asking questions that should have been answered by the city attorney. And instead were being answered by hypothetical. But what was most egregious is that Dunphy got up and, you know, called our noise ordinance. He literally said, this is systemic racism. You know, the noise ordinance. I thought it
I don't even remember him saying that, but that's ridiculous. Yeah.
I mean, I have, I recorded what he, I mean, I have that exact clip from where it was. And that's not even the most egregious part. The most egregious part is there were interviews and reporting specifically, it was Selay's up in North Portland that was closed supposedly because of noise ordinance enforcement. But there were news reports, Lamont Week, you could Google it. It's easy. Does not take much effort to find that, no, in fact, Selay's was closed because of crime and the blight to the neighborhood and, and largely violence, you know, gun violence in the area. And the neighbors that were there, there was in Lamont Week, the very first article that I came across, which I was like, fucker, it just pissed me off so much. That Joanne Hardesty of all people in 2006 or 2016, she was the president of the local chapter of the NAACP. She was quoted in saying, I wouldn't go so far as to call it racist. But, you know, if it acts like it's racist, blah, blah, blah. Her quote was basically there. So she was, but, but I thought it was just blew my mind that the most extremist activist city councillor we've had in my lifetime. Wouldn't call it racist, but Dunphy went, not only called it racist, but called it systemic racism and all the rest of that. And the galling part, the part that is just so like, he obviously to me was flat out lying in his testimony to city council because the Title 18 that he was referring to, where we're going to replace this section of city code that was duplicitous, according to him and all of that. And all of the rest of this pieces. Great. Get rid of that city code would be my argument. If that's, if that's what your whole argument is. But the exact same language was going to remain in Title 18.
So it doesn't really solve.
Didn't change a damn thing. And, you know, them trying to highlight that, you know, that specifically like they made it sound like Selay's was closed because they had racist neighbors who were filing noise complaints, when in fact, the Lamont Week reporting said lifetime neighbor who is black, the guy that who was quoted of like said, the whole reason he's like, it's not about, you know, this or that. He's like, it's they're just not good for the neighborhood.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I'll put up the, the quotes from the article. Yeah.
But so in those particular things, I think it's egregious that we have.
It is pretty well. I didn't know that much detail about it. That's why I thought your, yeah, your testimony is so great to like highlight that. Cause I was just like, you know, I tried to pay attention, I guess at a higher level and I was just like, he's just pushing this noise ordinance thing through. And, and like you said, it was curated in a way that just, it just went through like five minutes. They were all just like, yep, it's great. Like let's do it. And it was just kind of a backpacking exercise.
But he got, he got considerable news coverage from it. And one of the things that I, the funny thing is, I think Dunphy and I, his real effort was to support art and music in Portland. I would be completely on board with all of that. I, I'm all about that. But to put something forward in a way where you're not really achieving anything, but you waste city council time and the rest of it, it would have been much better to be like, hey, there's this, you know, duplication of city code. Let's just eliminate it. You don't need to call it racist. You don't need to be so inflammatory and, you know, it's posturing.
I was gonna say, I, I talk about it all the time on here and on my friend Kurt's show Rational Portland, but we are like the capital of performative politics. And that's what that is. It's just like, it doesn't actually solve anything, but it all, it all just rewards them and their image and.
Well, this is especially frustrating where public safety is so important. That's the Public Safety Committee. And there are so many other issues.
Yeah, there's way higher priority issues. Yeah.
And it's, you know, I remember them saying, oh, we can walk and chew gum. You know, we can do this and still address the other things. And it's like, but you can't. You spent, it was like 37 minutes.
There's only so much bandwidth. 12 people can try to, try to focus on. And yeah, when you spend time doing that, it's just kind of.
Do you have much hope if you've watched city council meetings? Do you have much hope that this city council is ever going to get things together and be able to do anything?
Really, I would, you know, I was going to say it's, sometimes I chalk it up to like 50, 50 as far as a split vote, but I think it's a little probably uneven, a little more uneven than that. You know, mostly like the people I've had on here, I trust a lot. I trust Eric Zimmerman a lot, Dan Ryan. Loretta Smith to some degree. Uh, there's, there's like a handful of people that the council president, I call her EPG.
Pirtle Guinea.
Yeah, I, I think that there, there might be enough political weight to have an even split, but that's not like, that's not the greatest situation to be in for most votes. But I also think it's like, my optimistic side is more like, I think we need to get through this first two-year term for half these districts. Cause they're going to, half of them are up next year for reelection. So my optimistic side is like, maybe we can flush out some of the ridiculousness on the council now. But it is Portland. I don't know. Like we, we have a history in the past few years of making horrible decisions. And so I don't know.
There was a great reader comment in the Oregonian, just like last week where I was like, just completely hit the nail on the head. Of having three representatives per district means you have no representative because no one takes responsibility for anything.
That was something, I had a lot of candidates on here last year. I had Keith Wilson on here last year too, but I, I would ask every single one of them. If I have an issue in my district, like, or, or if there's an issue in your district and there's a lot of attention to it and controversy, are they just going to point the finger at each other? Is that kind of what you're talking about? Like nobody is accountable.
Nobody takes account for anything. And, you know, to go into, not to pile on Dunphy, I don't have anything against Dunphy in particular. But the, you know, him and his cohort, Avalos wanting their own council office. So I'm just going to give you real numbers. Our corporate office, we have almost 4,000 square feet in the pit up building in the middle of downtown, across the street from our theater. We spend about a hundred and, so our rent is $4,600 between internet electricity and all the other things that go into it. You know, we're probably spending six grand a month all in for our, all of our offices, including phones, communication, everything. So when I see that they say, oh, we need 1.2 million dollars to build out our office. And the rest of that, it's, it's beyond laughable. Like it's, it's, it's so, and it's the one thing of like, there's a, I don't know why I'm going to go on this rabbit hole of that. Sorry. But there's a building, a low income housing building that just opened on Harvey Milk, just west of, of 11th. Right next, close to our theater. And I'm going to not remember the woman's name, but then the building was named after a civil rights leader of Portland back in the seventies. And I looked her up and there's a quote that she had that I was just like, wow. And so like, to have been said 50 plus years ago. It's the same thing that we're facing today that like, as someone who's fighting for rights or someone who's fighting for change, the biggest as someone who's fighting for rights or someone who's fighting for change, the biggest, you know, thing that we must battle is our own cynicism. You know, we have to maintain a level of hope. And when you see politicians getting into office, you know, uh, you know, to go through the motions of what city council did. They ran for office knowing they were going to have one staffer. You know, they should have planned for that. As soon as they got, you know, the third city council meeting, they gave themselves a huge increase in funding. They gave themselves a personal allowance, you know, two hundred and some thousand dollars, which is increasing to eight hundred thousand dollars for the next coming fiscal year, based on the mayor's proposed budget.
That must be what I was thinking of, because I saw in the budget, there is a council increase and that must be part of it.
It's huge. I mean, it's a huge amount of money when you're talking about.
That's like the, a credit line or something or?
It's just basically to cover expenses in the direct line of doing that. But going back to the Avalos Dunphy thing of not wanting to, you know, be in, in Smith's office.
Yeah. And yeah, I guess unpack it real quick for people that, because I always supported district one offices, but yeah, like Loretta Smith has office space. She offered to share it and those other two district one councillors turned her down basically. And they're like, we want this million plus dollar whatever facility.
Yeah. And a lot of it is because the charter originally said they had to have comparable security and communications and all the rest of that to city council, which also makes absolutely no sense. It just increases the cost. And from my point of view, the only, the only real reason that you can see that they want their own offices is so that they can use that space to bring in activists and people from their district to coordinate with for the upcoming council meetings. So they can stack the deck and public commentary and public testimony.
Yeah, yeah.
And further kind of move the needle of city council in that direction. And it's like, it's completely antithetical. It should not be possible for politicians to essentially lobby the city that they're running.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, the way you explained that noise ordinance thing is really, I'm glad you highlighted that because I, I see it a lot and it really is like, some of these things are just so curated with all the testimony and all the, it's, it's literally just planned, almost like a show.
Yes.
And then they're just like, we're going to push this thing through regardless of any opposing testimony. And a lot of times they literally, in my opinion, shut down testimony through that process of like, not telling anybody when it's going to happen. Or, or just having such a small window, or even just like, there's been moments where they don't even have enough time to let everyone testify. So they're just like, sorry, you guys can try to come back next week or whatever. But it's just, I, I see that happening a lot. And I, and I definitely think it's anti-democratic.
How do you feel when you see the public testimony that like, the day that I was there, there was six, fifty one, sixty one people that were signed up?
Really?
And uh, I didn't count, but I felt like about twenty of those were city workers who were there really to lobby for their upcoming contract.
For the, they're in union negotiations.
Exactly.
Yeah, that kind of stuff I, I can't stand it. I don't want to make people sound like I'm anti-union, but we have such a problem in Portland and Oregon with
The unions run everything in public life.
Lobbying everything. Yeah. And then they just control it all. And it's like, I think we need to figure out a way to be pro-union, but also leverage, have, have some leverage and not let them control everything. It's just kind of insane in our city, but um,
Yeah.
Were you gonna say something?
Well, I just, the, the thing that strikes me about all of that is, so then you had, so you had, out of those whatever amount of people, then you had a huge contingent of people who were on the police accountability committee that were there to rail against, you know, the minor increase in funding for the police budget. And you know, I, we could spend a half an hour talking about just that. But the thing that I find so difficult about public testimony is that it's never representative of the feeling of, if you talk, if you go out and talk to people on the street, that what you hear in a city council meeting from the public testimony is not representative of what people think.
No, I'm glad you brought that up because I, I actually brought, kind of, I, I should have phrased it better to Eric Zimmerman when he was here, but I was like, trying to explain to him like how, how councillors weigh public testimony. And to me, it seems like such an outdated kind of way to field opinion. Like, and there needs to be some order to it, because like you said, we can't just stack testimony from these lobbying groups or activist groups to make it look one way, when really, like you said, if you go on the street and ask people, it's totally different. Like, it just seems like such a archaic way to like gauge opinion.
Are you familiar with that study, survey that they released that was saying, oh, the majority of Portlanders would like to provide less funding to the Portland police?
And it was a poll, yeah, I believe commissioned by Steve Novick and.
Did you, did you look at the poll? It's twenty six pages.
I didn't look at them, but I, I read the Lamont Week's highlights of, you know, I thought it was interesting, the district level opinions were very different. But I also like, I was posting on this stuff today because I'm like, you know, if these councillors wanting to get into this polling game, um, that's why I posted, they just had all this, you know, Portlanders want a strong public safety system here. Like, that's been the consistent polling for years. And I just was posting that because I'm like, yeah, if they want to play this polling game, you can poll numbers in any direction to make it look one way. And that's kind of what they did with that.
The hard part about like anything that's quoted in that way is that I always, when I see a story in the New York Times or whatever, it's like, that study says, and it's a hyperlink. I'm that guy who always clicks on the link and I go down the rabbit hole.
Granular details.
Oh, absolutely. Because you can find, you know, so many details about what they're actually saying. Like, one of the things I thought was fascinating about that survey is like, they listed that whether people identified as being renters, homeowners or other. And the percentage of that was almost five percent was other. So.
What even is that?
I'm assuming that means homeless or transition, you know, someone who's living in their car or, you know, something like that. And when, so when you start looking at that, at one in twenty people that were on that survey were homeless, their number one displeasure, I guarantee you is going to be police.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's like, it doesn't take any, you know, any level of thinking to not realize that they get harassed all the time, you know, to move or whatever it happens to be. I would not want to be homeless and have to deal with that.
Yeah.
So that would be my biggest concern.
Yeah. So that's going to pop a lot in the.
Yeah. And they were specific to that survey, they were very systemic in making sure that there was a certain racial makeup of, you know, percentages that were in there. And as far as I could tell, those percentages did not comport with the US census surveys of like, population of Portland.
Right.
And so you have to ask the question of like, well, why did they choose that number?
There's a mismatch there.
Yeah.
Proportions.
But you can do that with any statistic. You can find a way to invert the, you know, the thing. If you went through the individual questions that were in that survey, the overwhelming majority of people were not saying that defund the police or provide less, or I, most people actually prioritized cutting parks funding over anything else. And I, you know, the thing I didn't get to say at city council was like, what's the point in having really wonderful parks that no one can use because they're afraid to go in them?
Right. Yeah, no, it's, it is a, I'm glad you wrote that up because it's like, it's hard for people to decipher through it, but that's why like, I just felt that whole poll was pushed to poll that opinion. And it really was like, the questions were phrased in a way, like you said, it wasn't defund, it was like, if you had to pick between this and this. And that's a very different question. That's why I was highlighting these other polls of like overwhelmingly, people just want better public safety and more staffing and all that stuff. And it, and it, it just muddies the water when you have these weird polls that are like this or this. It's not the same question in my mind, but um, but yeah, it's really interesting. I'm going to do um, my six month review here coming up soon and we're going to re-rank. Although I started doing my rankings the other day, the councillors, and it hasn't shifted that much. But I might move them a little bit. We'll see. I don't know, me and mine.
I think it's interesting, like a friend of mine, I was pushing to try to run in district three and he actually registered to run and then missed the, just like Sam Adams, missed the voter guide deadline and then kind of gave up.
Yeah.
But his district in particular, it was shocking to me that district three.
I'm in, and we're in district three here too, by the way.
This district uh, got the most activist extremist members on the council. And it's, it's funny to me because I remember I went to Think Out Loud, did a in-person thing, I can't remember what bar it was, somewhere in southeast Portland. Where they had the candidates come down and, you know, all twenty something of them, or whatever it was that they interviewed in a bar and Novick and Mario um, were there. And I remember, you know, sitting as close as I am to you right now in that bar, listening to their answers and being like, oh my God. And the thing at the time that was shocking to me.
Yeah. They say wild stuff, for sure.
Well, it, it wasn't given enough credence at the time, but they effectively cheated to get public financing. And you know, I, I know that they wanted to brush it under the rug and there were other candidates that didn't win, that did the same thing with them, but, and yes, it wasn't.
Outside of the small donors stuff?
Yeah, they, they were sharing, they were sharing donors effectively is what, you know, encouraging people to give money to the other candidates so that they would meet thresholds.
I'm very familiar with that.
So the thing is, it's not against the law. And you know, everyone, like, this is the thing that's so frustrating about, we've devolved so far in the environment of like, looking at having, you know, a felon as our president.
Yeah.
That we, we now just say, oh, it's okay as long as it wasn't illegal. But it's like, do you really want someone who has no integrity to serve you, representing you? That they got there by effectively defrauding voters and, and the citizens of money that might've gone to someone else or shouldn't have been spent at all to support them getting into office.
Right. Yeah. And it's something else that really bugs me and I'll bring it up on the next city council review. I have to ask for my, my friend Max about this, but he says, it, it probably even is on Lamont Week too, but I'm pretty sure Candace moved to district one just to run there. Like, I don't know which district she lived in before, but I see that as semi-fraudulent. It's like, if you're saying you're representing these people, have you, have you really done that? Have you lived there for a lot of years and actually?
I think it's interesting because in her public.
And obviously she made a lot of the charter for the new system, which bugs me as well. I thought that was a conflict of interest.
Yeah, they should have never been anyone who was involved in the charter, should not have been able to run in the first.
Yeah, exactly. Have a waiting period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the one thing that like, you know, when I asked you like, are you cynical or do you have hope? I, I, I get to a point some days where I, I just.
It's hard to, yeah.
It almost feels hopeless because we have, the city of Portland is facing such dire problems.
Right.
And the council doesn't, the, the people that are in those seats do not seem up to the task. You know, I posted a comment on Lamont Week and I uh, put a link to a YouTube clip of, you know, Logan Roy from Succession. You are not serious people.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, at least a third of them are not serious people.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I did a, um, who was I talking, I was talking with Dan Ryan actually on my friend Kristen's podcast recently about how a lot of them, because he's had a decent amount of public service now, but in his opinion, in our opinion, a lot of people are just focused on like their higher political career and has nothing to do with fixing our city right now or any of the actual local issues. And I can see right through that. That's what I told him. I'm like, hopefully other people can. I, I know it's hard to, when you're in the weeds of local politics, but that's what I see is I see a lot of them just doing the performative politics to further their later career that they're focused on and.
The funny thing is, is if you come from, I mean, I, there was a, I talked to them individually. When I would see them sometimes, that city councillors, I'm like, what good does it do you to have a career when you oversaw the complete decline of a major up and coming, like one of the fastest growing cities in North America. And you know, if you look at it, let's take all of the other factors away. Portland as a geographic location has natural beauty, convenient location, like for the most part, friendly citizens.
Yeah.
All of the things that make for one of the greatest places to live and they are throwing it away. How can that possibly be a stepping stone to hire office?
It's a good point. Yeah. It, it, it at least probably limits them to like this area, maybe. I don't know, but that's, that's a good point for sure. Um, let me see, I got a couple more things here. I think I'm going to move it back to movie stuff. Unless there's anything else you want to say about city stuff.
I mean, I, I would, I would like to add just one aspect to it of like, I feel that um, Portlanders and the voices that get surfaced to city council again, through the majority of people who testify is we get stuck in talking points and we don't really look at outcomes. And we're not looking at like, the, the ripple down impacts of what we're talking about. So like, the, the choices to not prioritize detox and not prioritize that when you're homeless, or when you have people who are, as, as we call them, our most marginalized citizens, the freedom that we take for granted as people who live in a house, you know, and the liberties that we have that it come associated with, you can come in and you can lock a door and you're in your place. Um, those freedoms don't necessarily mean the same thing to someone who's living on the street. And getting them off the street should be our highest priority. And that doesn't mean that, you know, again, talking points of housing first and all the rest of that. It doesn't help society to take people who are mentally ill or have substance use problems to move them in people, in with next door to someone who has a home and create a living hell for the people who are there with what comes with that. You need to get them into treatment and it unfortunately, we need to at least have a requirement that people get treated up to the point where they can actually make a decision rather than their sole motivating factor is feeding an addiction.
Right.
You know, so many people that I have met over the last several years in downtown Portland who've gotten off of drugs, telling me, you know, continuously that once you're in the grip of like fentanyl or heroin or any like strong addictive drug, the only thing that matters is your next fix.
Getting more, yeah.
And so the, the.
Especially, I always bring up is with how cheap fentanyl is too. It's like, especially when it's like a dollar.
Yeah.
Like, you know.
Twenty cans, ten cans, depending on where you're, what you're doing with it.
Yeah.
But it's just, we can't move forward unless we can come up with a new language. And you know, Joanne Hardesty came up with this phrase that pretty, pretty much perpetuates Portland, our houseless neighbors. And I always say to people of like, this is completely disingenuous. Like, if you live in a given home, your neighbor is the person that you can be like, hey neighbor, you know, maybe you don't even know their name.
Right.
But you know them, you know who they are, you know their routine, you, you know, you have a level of, you feel safe with them, hopefully, being next to you. Our houseless neighbors are transient, live in tents, you don't know who they are, you don't know how long they're going to be there. And when you leave in lots of neighborhoods, the amount of break-ins and thefts that occur. And it's not the fault of the people that are living on the street in the sense that um, you know, they're doing their thing to survive. I get that. But you can't deny the impact, the collective impact of, that that has on a neighborhood. And so to say.
Especially at downtown.
Yeah. Well, I mean, and it's moved so much into the suburbs, you know, so much more in the last 10 years than ever in my whole life of living here, seeing tents in like neighborhoods.
And especially, yeah, especially too in Portland where we have these little micro neighborhoods.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. So when we have this conversation and we, we try to, you know, say, hey, I believe in being, having empathy and, you know, putting humans first, why don't we try doing that?
Right, yeah.
And, and actually saying, it's not humane to just leave people on the street. If they, if they were just clinically dead, which is what happens in a fentanyl overdose, they were dead.
Right.
And they were brought back to life. Our first responders, they shouldn't be saying, oh, would you like to go to the hospital? It should just be, you're going to the hospital. And, and it should be a commitment. They shouldn't be able, you know, twenty four, forty eight, seventy two hours again, to get them to that decision-making ability to have a moment of clarity.
Yeah.
In order to do that. And I just don't know how, if we don't start taking and completely shifting the way that we talk about this.
Totally, yeah.
I don't see how we're going to get anywhere.
Yeah, it, it's a huge kind of, I don't want to say battle going on, but yeah, it's, I, I, we just did an episode the other day with Metro President and uh, Clarkland County Commissioner Ben West. Yeah. And they're basically like, I don't want to put words in my mouth, but basically circumventing Multnomah County because they're so tired of that fight, which you kind of just described of like, the old ideology and mentality that basically ignores addiction and says that that's not the problem. And I completely agree with you. Like, I've known a lot of addicts and it's like, you have to know that that's a disease and you're not helping those people by leaving them on the street. And also the two things I always tell people about, the problem you highlighted is like, um, and I'll put this stat up here, my friend Tom, Thomas Wolfe, who is a formerly homeless addict in San Francisco, always brings up a stat that's like, I think it's like seventy percent, I may be way a little off, but uh, it's the majority of overdose deaths are indoors. And it's exactly for the problem you highlighted of you give people an apartment when they're not ready and they're still addicted and that's what happens.
No one sees them.
Right. And there's no services, there's no addiction treatment. That and the other thing that um, people brought up to me earlier this year, which I didn't know is, a lot of those properties can't even get insurance for those type of tenants anymore because of fires and all those other problems.
We can barely get insurance. If we didn't have the insurance that we had in downtown Portland, we currently today, if we signed up for new insurance, we wouldn't be able to get it. We opened in Indianapolis, doesn't have the problems in Portland.
Right, right.
We had that problem. We almost couldn't get insurance for new business.
It's just crazy. Yeah. Um, but yeah, I'm glad you brought that up for sure. Um, yeah, I was going to go back to the movie stuff for a second here. Um, just a couple of quick things. I wanted, this is random, but I wanted to get your take on, do you know what I'm talking, you probably do, when I say the OpenAI Miyazaki thing? Do you know what I'm talking about? That thing where people were asking ChatGPT to make scenes in the Miyazaki style? And now there's this big legal battle. I was just curious what you think about that and what, what your take on like AI and all that stuff with film and.
So interesting thing of like, I'm probably going to be proven wrong in 20 years, but I always like to say to people about AI, because the, you know, the strikes summer before last just, you know, nearly killed us again, after we got on our feet again from COVID of having no content coming in. And the fear from writers and actors was that they were going to be supplanted by AI. And one of the things I constantly say to people is like, again, we've labeled it incorrectly, artificial intelligence is a, is a great amplification of what we currently have.
I totally agree.
We, we have.
These are language models.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we have a pattern recognition system that can regurgitate back to us. And you know, I always make the analogy and it was, there was an article today that Bonobo, was that the, the Bonobo uh, monkey that just passed away?
Oh, at the zoo?
Had learned, no, there was the monkey that had learned to communicate via symbols, had the largest vocabulary. And there was an article about how. And there was an article about how uh, we're losing that research capacity. But in animal research, whether it's with dogs or anything else that you look at of communication, there's always the argument that like, oh, the pet is just mimicking. You know, you, or is doing something to get a reward, doesn't understand anything.
It's all manipulation.
Manipulation. And to a large extent, that's exactly what we have with large language models. They're more sophisticated and they have a much larger vocabulary, but by and large, you know, a, a great case in point that I always laugh at is they say that current, the most cutting edge LLM today is the equivalent of about a four-year-old.
Yeah.
Would you walk up to any four-year-old and be like, what stock should I buy tomorrow? Or what should I do with this thousand dollars? I mean, they might be able to give you an answer and it, you know, the language model is gonna be a better answer than what a four-year-old actually would be. But it's hindered nonetheless by the same nonsensical idiocy of like, just not having any intelligence behind it. And so when you, if you come from that frame of mind of like, looking at what AI as we're terming it, I mean, I always laugh. It's like, we have developer that works for us and he's like, it's a marketing term. It's like multimedia, this information superhighway, all these things that we've suffered through over the last three decades of just stupid labels. You know, you know, it's a marketing thing where it's like AI mouse, what's a mouse gonna have that's AI in it, right?
They just throw it on everything now.
So you have to step back and say, okay, where did it get its intelligence from? And it came from hoovering up creative works that actual people did.
Yeah.
And it's mimicking those works.
In a lot of, yeah, and that's kind of the Miyazaki thing, but OpenAI often argues, hey, it's all just uh, part of the kind of collective. Like we can just take it because it's in the internet, basically, which I would argue against.
But so you brought up the thing about like um, Oregon having a bill to like compensate, you know, social media companies to compensate journalism. I would argue that there should have been bills, you know, 10 years ago that would have reined in. It was Google that hollowed out journalism.
That's true.
You know, their, their ability to index and take the, you know, first four sentences of an article and you know, relegate news to basically being the click through to generate money for Google. And then stripping their, their advertising from the model that served journalism. We're doing the same thing with both written words, creative output, all the rest of those things of like, there's the moment that AI is actually creating something, i.e. doesn't need a prompt.
Right.
Then what they're saying could be true because all of these other things, we have what's called copyright law.
Right.
An intellectual property that has been recognized and fair use as we've used, you know, you know, if you wanted to use a clip of something, you know, you could claim fair use of it because it's small and out of context. When you're ingesting the entirety of the work into a model, and then yes, that model may only reference one sentence of it in the way that it generates something. It's no longer fair use. You've, you've consumed the entirety of that entity and you're manipulating it.
I would totally agree. Yeah. That's why, that's what I was trying to say a second ago is, you know, OpenAI argues this is all fair use because it's you know, when I work in TV, they started doing this all time. It's gotta be transformative to get around uh, copyright. But um, but yeah, I, I always highlight there's the huge New York Times case that's going on with them. And it's just so interesting to me because, and I hope AI or OpenAI loses honestly, because it's like, they've already brokered these deals with news and media companies to license their stuff.
Yep.
And that's why New York Times is suing them. It's like, you didn't do that with us and you're just scraping all of our news stories and putting it into your system and.
And it's worse than that because the thing that I, you know, I harp on this all day of like, you have the bigger the companies, the bigger the impediment to get going. You know, I was in the late nineties, I was involved in a startup to create a new search engine and Google was barely a thing at the time. It was AltaVista and Yahoo. Yeah. And one of the things I remember, I will never forget it, like we did the math at the time in nineteen ninety nine. It would cost two point seven million dollars at the time to trawl the entirety of the internet as it existed in nineteen ninety nine. And that was growing at a rate, it was like more than doubling every week at the time. And so you like, look at the, if someone was gonna compete with a Google today, you'd be looking on the order of over a billion dollars in capital.
For sure.
To, to just, to just get started. And that's not even to build the technology or to do anything else. I'm talking about just the infrastructure to be able to do that. And so when you look at the massive amounts of dollars and the actual energy that like AI is consuming today, burning through billions and billions of dollars in the pursuit of something that really, there's no evidence that I've seen that the more money that's thrown at it, you know, in the Chinese algorithm that, you know, strip mined and created a much smaller version of a language model.
I forget the name of it, but yeah, I know what you're talking about. Yeah.
There's no evidence that just because you make it bigger at this point beyond the size and there's no more information for them to feed into these models to make them grow.
Yeah.
And I'm of the belief that as we get further and further down, more and more AI-generated content comprising a bigger and bigger portion of what's actually online, that the models will get even stupider. Because they're, they're going to start quoting themselves.
Derivative, yeah, of the old content.
Yeah.
I, I'm already, you know, I'm just sounding like a boomer here, bro, I do it. But I'm already tired of seeing like now the big trend is um, all these podcasters doing the baby versions and that. I just get so tired of scrolling through and just seeing all AI-generated stuff. It has such a distinct kind of look to it and you recognize it pretty quickly. And I'm just like, where's the real stuff?
AI voices. I'm sure you've seen those.
Ones that like, you know, people started doing a couple of years ago, it's like celebrity fake AI voices and they still get away with that and, but it's just crazy. I, I thought me and you would agree on that because like as a filmmaker too, I've tried to have it write comedy scripts and it just like, it's not funny at all. It doesn't, it hasn't really understand the nuance of comedy and that type of stuff yet.
And cadence, you know, it's, it's subtlety. It's not good at subtlety.
It's not, yeah.
And.
And, and I'll just be totally honest too. I'm one of those people like, I almost never use it. I don't know about you.
I've, we, we've attempted to, to use it in places. I do find it interesting to like, uh, like mid-journey or it's like generate a promo image for something that we're doing that's free or something like that.
Yeah.
The hard part is, is like, so we're, this is what the guy always says, like, we're not putting artists out of business because we're too poor to have afforded to hire someone for that in the first place. It's just allowing us.
They were already out of business.
Yeah, they were, they, I mean, we do hire artists to do certain things. We still hire them for those things. We've not supplanted that work, but there, where I have found AI interesting is it gives you as a layman kind of a punch to get started in a direction, especially if you're, if you have like writer's block or you're just trying to figure out, what is the first paragraph I should put on the page?
That starting point.
Super useful.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I'm gonna start going through these rapid fire things, I think. I guess I'll do these, I'm gonna do this Blu-ray thing. Yeah. Let me grab these.
One of them is newer.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I should have probably put more thought on this, but I kind of got a cycle through like, like I'll really hyper-focus on one movie for like three months and these are just, I've been, I've been watching all the Exorcists recently. Uh, obviously I love this movie. It's classic. Um, I just want you to rank these. This is midsummer. This is the special eight twenty-four edition. I have like just weird dark taste in movies, I think, but uh, Uncut Gems is one of my favorite movies. How, how would you rank these three?
So it's hard for me always when you look at movies like this because genres uh, are different, right? This is one of the things that's wrong with the Oscars is that, you know, there's always the criticism, like the substance this last year didn't get any recognition.
That was a good movie. Yeah.
That horror and the rest of that doesn't really work, right? Like it, it doesn't compare with a serious movie.
Right.
So when you look at this, it's like, like The Exorcist, I think that to this day, that movie for me is still provides sort of the most unsettling.
Totally.
I don't even know if I call it horror. That's the hard part about it is like, that movie is like um.
I was thinking about, it's almost like everything just keep going more wrong and gets worse and worse, you know, until the end, obviously, but.
It's like basically supernatural slash religious slash uh, all the.
Medical, yeah.
Yeah, that are, that, that, when you look at it as they're tangentially related to real life, have elements of your worst nightmare.
Yeah.
In those things. It's not like, you know, Friday the thirteenth or a slasher film, which I think you can easily dismiss as, oh, that's just, you know.
Chock, chalky, whatever. Yeah.
So I, I think The Exorcist, I, I thought the newer.
Do you like horror? Is that kinda?
Horror is not my favorite genre, but that's why I said, I don't, I don't call The Exorcist horror because I actually think The Exorcist is a really great movie.
Yeah. Um, kind of documentary style almost.
Yeah. And it's just like, it covers a way, it covers uh, the human psyche in a way that's really frightening.
Yeah.
And it's not so much what you see that's frightening. It's what you impart as you're watching it, which I think is like what some of the, the best movies. Now midsummer.
These two, most people don't like these movies, especially this. People hate this movie for some reason. I love it. I don't know.
So I have tried to get multiple people to watch Uncut Gems because I'm like, Adam Sandler, his performances in that is just incredible.
Yeah.
And um, you know, you, he, his, his character in that movie is incredibly sad.
It is, yeah. And I've re-watched it a lot and you, you really start to see how much kind of a piece of shit he is when you watch it. And you're like, man, he's just betting on money he doesn't have. He's screwing people over and.
But it's, that all from my point of view, and when I see that, I've seen, I, I mean, I, I almost identify certain character traits in myself of like.
For sure.
You have to be a gambler.
Yeah.
To wanna be an entrepreneur, right?
Yeah.
And you know, you can't gamble if you're constantly thinking about the consequence. And that's the one thing that's like, you know, when you look at um, something like Uncut Gems, uh, it has some of the best character elements of a movie in a long time and it's the most tense movie.
It is, yeah.
I think I've seen in the last several decades of like, it's just, you're just constantly like.
Well, what's funny is have you seen Good Time, their other movie with Robert Pattinson? I have it back there, but um, they made it before this, the same brothers. And I always tell people that like makes me more tense than this. Maybe it's because I've seen this more. But um, but it is like, you know, people, I hear that people all the time, like I could barely get through it because I was just like on edge.
Those are, you know, I always say to people, like your favorite movies or what makes a good movie. It's what makes a really good movie is, is it re-watchable?
Yeah.
Like if you can only watch it once, then it's probably not a good movie in, like that doesn't mean that it's a bad movie.
It's not a classic. Yeah.
Right. And then the other element is, does it leave you thinking about something about it after you leave or after you're done? Are you, are you thinking about it a week later?
Yeah.
And certainly all three of these movies have the elements of that of like, you can re-watch them all, in my opinion. They have the, the, you can think through different elements of each of the movies and, and they leave an, a mark on you. In some of the best ways. I, it's one of the reasons I like, you know, it's funny because two of these are basically indies, right?
Right.
Wanna, I'm trying to remember, Uncut Gems, both of them are eight twenty-four there.
Yeah.
And then that, yeah. Originally was Warner Brothers, the.
Yeah, that's, when you mentioned that earlier, I did a story the other day, this is still with inflation, their highest gross movie all time, which is crazy to me. Like I did, I wish I could picture the popularity of it in the seventies, like.
It's just like, can you imagine like even like when Star Wars came out and ticket prices were what they were and the screen counts were so much lower? You know, so like.
It's all concentrated too.
Well, it meant that a lot of times people couldn't even get in to see the movie for three weeks because the lines.
Demand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's, it's funny how that like, you know, it feeds into itself. And that's one of the reasons, again, going back to movies of like changes that are happening. The way that movies are being released right now, there's not enough um, titles coming from the studios to hold in a multiplex. So multiplexes have switched to having, you know, when Mission Impossible opens this Friday, it's gonna be on four screens. You know, Lilo and Stitch will be on four screens or whatever in a major multiplex. And so that feeds the demand, but it creates no held demand. Because everyone can just get in their seats, you know, so the occupancy percentages have plummeted in a lot of multiplexes since pre-COVID days because of the availability of showtimes. There's a showtime every fifteen minutes, basically.
Right.
And for a movie that has a three-hour runtime like Mission Impossible does, uh, you need that because they're only gonna get four shows a day maximum.
With that log of a movie.
That long of a movie.
Yeah. That's crazy. Yeah. Thanks for doing that. I was just curious. I have like, I think people get weirded out by my taste in movies.
No, you know, the thing that's funny about all movies, and when you look at it of like, what, what makes something appealing to you? Everyone's got different tastes.
Yeah.
But everyone has strong reactions to the things that they like.
Yeah.
And that's not really true of a lot of other things. Maybe food would be the other equivalent of that.
Yeah. Um, do you remember your first movie you've seen in a movie theater?
Boy, not really.
Pretty sure I, I, I could be wrong on this, but I'm pretty sure I've seen Little Mermaid, the original Disney cartoon.
Yeah. The first movies I remember were like in the backseat of my parents' car on a drive-in.
Okay, yeah. I was lucky enough to, my town I grew up in had a drive-in and so I saw, I saw like, I don't know, a couple of movies there, but yeah.
I wanna say I remember Jaws being playing. I know it wasn't, I, I know it wasn't original, in the original release, because I would have been too young for that.
Couple of years after.
Yeah, because this is the 50th anniversary and I'm not 50. So it was like, maybe it was the second Jaws or something that was playing as like the second movie in the drive-in. Uh, but I remember seeing Bambi at a drive-in.
Okay.
Weirdly, the movie that I remember most of like, when I'd seen it so many times and then realizing, oh, there, people are saying things and what they're saying is kind of interesting too, was the first live-action Superman.
Okay.
Christopher Reeves.
Yeah.
I had probably seen that fifteen or twenty times and I was like nine or 10 years old when I started to go, oh, what Lex, what Lex Luthor's saying here is kind of interesting.
Tune into the dialogue a little bit more. Yeah. All right, I'm gonna go through my food. I, I always end with these food questions and stuff. Do you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Maybe you don't like peanut butter.
I don't like peanut butter. I love peanuts. I don't like peanut butter. So if I were to choose.
Person I've ever heard that.
I would, if I were to choose, I would probably choose crunchy.
Okay, that's what I like. Yeah. That's all good. Um, do you have a favorite type of french fry? Do you like crinkle cut, regular cut, curly fries, waffle fries?
Oh, crinkle cut, I think is the best.
Okay. I like crinkle cut. Let's say you're getting ice cream somewhere. Do you go waffle cone, regular cone cup?
Oh, always waffle cone.
Okay. And what, it's the tastiest. And what flavor or is it just random every time?
It'll be random for me. Usually it'll be something like uh, sherbet or uh, some kind of like cookie dough or birthday cake or.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Uh, I was gonna ask you earlier too, do you have a favorite movie snack? Like I always, I gravitate towards raisin hats, but it's.
So it changes, like currently vacillating between like nerds clusters and um, I can't remember what they're called, the like little soft filled, I can't remember what they're called, the Sweet Tarts.
Okay.
They're kind of like.
Chewy sweet or like, uh, yeah, I don't know.
They're, they're in the shape of like a Twizzler, but they have a soft, you know.
I know what you're talking about.
I don't remember what they're called, but those are also really good.
Okay. And are you a popcorn guy? Do you like?
Oh yeah, love popcorn.
Is there a style you like? Like I, I'm into kettle corn right now. Some people hate kettle corn.
I was gonna say, so I like kettle corn, but I also, the style of corn kernel I like is the mushroom kernel.
I didn't even know that was a thing.
There's, there's like butterfly and like, and so the differences of them, the, the kettle corn is usually a mushroom kernel.
Okay.
And so they have less husk in them when they're popped. So a lot of people consider them to be too chewy and not, you know, not traditional popcorn. That's what we sell actually in Portland here is, is the mushroom kernel. Did not work in the Midwest. Everyone hated it. So we switched to butterfly kernels.
I didn't even know there were different kernels. That's.
There's even like tiny little ones. If you go to CinemaCon and the corn vendors, it's always fascinating, but there's like these tiny little kernels that pop like, like what you would probably consider to be the chaff at the bottom of a bowl. You can actually get popcorn that's like made of that. And a lot of times that's candy coated. So it'll be like, it'll stick together in big.
Okay.
Gloves.
That is interesting. Yeah. Um, let's see here. Do you have a favorite fast food? Do you know fast food at all?
Hmm. Oh, everyone goes to fast food, right?
I go too much.
That kind of vacillates. I think the, the best variety is probably Jack in the Box. Like you get breakfast all day long and, and the rest of that, but like sometimes there'll be like an Arby's, not their roast beef, but their fresh sandwiches.
Okay.
Are surprisingly good.
Okay. Their curly fries are good too.
Yeah, curly fries. They have the best mozzarella sticks of any fast food place.
Okay. Yeah, surprising amount of people bring up the Jack in the Box tacos, which is funny because they're only a dollar, but like, it's just interesting. People shout them out all the time.
They have both the regular tacos and the mini tacos.
They got mini ones.
Those little tiny ones that are.
Uh, let's see here. Uh, do you use an alarm?
Yes.
Cell phone or?
Cell phone. Yeah. I don't know how anybody wakes up ever without.
Well, I, like I'm, I set one, but I kind of wake up regardless anyway. You know, are you kind of like that? Like?
I wish I was.
It actually wakes you up though. Okay. Um, do you believe in Bigfoot?
I, I.
Or aliens or?
Wanted to believe in Bigfoot when I was a kid. I did. As I've gotten older, the, the likelihood or the propensity for it to remain hidden to me is like, it's gotta be.
Yeah. Well, I would say Bigfoot, aliens or ghosts. Bigfoot to me is the least on that scale. But are there any of those that you?
I wish I did. This is one of those things that's like, the more I've learned, the more, the more I kind of just go, yeah, it's probably not likely.
Well, you're the perfect person to ask with your tech kind of video background of like, you know, because I'm a, I'm a believer of like, you know, if there were evidence of that, we would certainly have it now with all this.
Yeah.
High fidelity stuff.
Cell phones and everything else. Yes.
Okay. Let's see here. Is there a brand? Well, you do run a brand. I always ask people, is, if you could run a gigantic company, is there one that you'd wanna run? But you run living room theaters.
I wish we were, so that's the funny thing is, um, you know, we at one point went through an exercise of like, how big would we wanna be? Cause we were trying to grow uh, in the mid twenty fifteens, like we opened an Indianapolis location, started in early, you know, twenty teens.
Yeah.
And we set our size of like five locations would be ideal. And I always had this belief for myself is I wouldn't want to run a company so large that I couldn't know the names of the people that work with us. Um, and once you get beyond that, I believe you lose a certain sense of humanity. you lose a certain sense of humanity that I think is necessary to be responsible.
Sure. Yeah, makes sense. Um, okay, I've been doing this, this will be the last thing I promised. I'm sorry this is going long, but um.
It's my fault.
No, no, it's all good. Um, I've been doing these Price is Right things. So I go to grocery outlet up the road and I find like some of the cheapest stuff I can find. I'm on unemployment, like you said earlier. I know I took that
Yep.
Path because I got laid off earlier, but um, I want you to guess how much this mini box of Cheez-Its costs.
Where did you get it?
Grocery outlet.
Grocery outlet.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna guess eighty-nine cents.
It's pretty close. It's less, less than that. And I'll say it's less than fifty cents.
Wow.
Which is arbitrary number, but if you wanna guess again.
That must be like forty-nine cents?
That's pretty much it. Yeah, I think this was forty-seven cents.
Wow, that's pretty good.
So, yeah, and you can take that if you want. Do you like Cheez-Its? Yeah. I thought the little mini boxes are cool. I've been buying them a lot.
Yeah. Well, especially the, you know, they have the duos as well.
I, my favorite is the extra, what do they call them? Extra toasty?
Yeah.
Yeah, extra toasted. But yeah, it's a fun thing. Um, but yeah, is there anything else you wanna bring up before we? I'll put the website up here too for living room, obviously, and all that stuff, but.
Yeah, you know, the only thing I would say is um, people in Portland in general should appreciate the arts and partake of them more. And find ways, even if you're, you know, even if you're very poor, like we have Mondays and Tuesdays or discount days and there's, you know, all kinds of different ways to find discounts for movies. But like, you know, whether that's going to somebody putting on a play or music or something.
Don't you guys do music there too?
We do on Fridays and Saturdays.
Yeah.
But there's been an, I have witnessed, and this is not just our business, but like everywhere that I go, you know, uh, we've lost our nightlife.
Yeah.
There's almost nothing open anymore significant past like nine or 10 o'clock. And again, as you contract in those kinds of things, there's less opportunity, especially, especially for art. You need the opportunities of low cost in order to, for people to push their creativity and to flourish and to get better. They need places where they have opportunities. And if it's always only the headliners and only the high end that is working, then who's gonna be our next generation of artists and how do they get out there? And uh, I just wish that people would go out more, get out of your house.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's great. Yeah, it's great advice, especially for Portland right now. And uh, yeah, go to living room theaters for sure. Uh, Steve, yeah, thanks for coming today. You're always welcome back, man.
Thank you so much. This has been uh, really fun.
Yeah.